Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Dare County Board of Commissioners meeting this 18th day of January 2022. At this time, I'd like to ask the Reverend Gay Morris to come forward and lead us in an invocation. Reverend Morris, thank you for being here this evening. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Nice to meet you. I invite you all into an attitude of prayer and meditation. O God, source and goal of all that is, we gather in this place with hope, opening our hearts to the world beyond our narrow selves. All those we love and care for and all those we do not know are entitled to respect, to dignity, and to justice. We pray today for the citizens of this county and especially remember those who hold this community in care. In this time of pandemic, those in the medical field who serve us, those who teach our children, those who keep our community safe and who are there for us in times of emergency. We pray for those gathered here who are called to public service and who accept their responsibility to this community of Dare County. We've had the honor this past week of being reminded of some of the wisdom of the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and we lift our commissioners up in prayer as we consider what Dr. King said about leadership. Everybody can be great because anybody can serve. You don't have to have a college degree to serve. You don't have to make your subject and verb agree to serve. You only need a heart full of grace, a soul generated by love. May our hearts open now with grace and love so that this meeting becomes a workshop for our endeavor where our common humanity and aspirations are honored and realized. We pray in the name of all that is holy. Blessed be, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend Morris.
Thank you.
May we stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. That brings us to item one on the agenda, and that's the chairman's update.
Thank you, county manager. Commissioner Tobin is with us. He's just virtual. He is, can you hear us, Jim?
I can hear you loud and clear.
Thank you. Mr. Tobin is quarantining, so at any rate, he is here with us virtually. Have a few items to go over this evening. Would certainly like to talk about this past weekend. Saturday, the vice chair and I attended the 31st Dare County celebration of the Martin Once again, the birthday celebration was as nice as it has been in the past. The Lewis family is in their 31st year of promoting this and putting this on. And this year, the guest speaker was Dr. Benjamin Speller. And very, very good comments. I will just add that one of Dr. King's famous quotes, one of many, said, "I've decided to stick with love. Hate is too great a burden to bear." What a quote, most definitely. Nonviolent, Dr. Martin Luther King, very nice celebration. And thank all of those that attended. Vice Chairman, thank you for being there with me. I'm gonna talk about COVID again, and I wish it was a meeting where I didn't have to mention it, but unfortunately, we're still dealing with this pandemic and this issue. Another week of unprecedented numbers in terms of sheer volume of COVID cases in Dare. Numbers are driven by a very contentious Omicron variant now. The January 11 update from Dare County Health and Human Services reported 799 cases of COVID just in the week from January 3 to January 9. Those numbers are unreal. The positive test rate in the country jumped to, in the county, excuse me, jumped to 43.68 in the past week. That was substantially up from the week of December 27. The numbers of Dare County residents hospitalized with COVID-14 remains relatively low, and it increased by one this past week. One new death was reported on January 10, a woman aged 65 and over who was the 27th county resident to succumb to the virus since the onset of pandemic. The fortunate thing is, I guess with this Omicron, is it appears that it's not as severe cases as the COVID-19 was, but DHS also tracks the percentage of weekly cases. And for that same week, January 3, the 59% of the cases occurred among the unvaccinated. I don't know how many times I've got to sit up here and say this, meeting after meeting after meeting, get vaccinated. Just go get vaccinated, you know, and be done with it. And hopefully, we're getting past these numbers, that we'll see things coming down, and we can get on with life because we certainly need to with this virus. And I just encourage you once again, go get vaccinated. We were pleased to hear this week that Kitty Hawk moved ahead on a new public safety facility in Kitty Hawk. At its January 10 meeting, the city council, town council moved closer to the construction of a facility on 158 near Bennett Street that will eventually house the town's police department as well as fire and emergency medical services, the substation. County manager's been working with their mayor for some time now, and we're pleased to note that the county is going to piggyback onto their project to construct an EMS substation as part of the building. That substation would account for approximately $500,000 of the cost, so we're excited to see that happen. We've announced that we're gonna, we have EMS facilities that go back to the '60s, and we're gonna do this all over the county. So we're excited about the steps we're taking there and working with each of the municipalities to make this happen. This also last week, I want to thank Commissioner Ross and Commissioner Bateman for attending the ribbon cutting for the new electrical lab at COA at the Arts Building. COA and Dean Sweeney is working very, very closely with Duke and his home builders group that hopefully in the next year or so, we're gonna have just about all the trades being taught over at COA. We've got great plans for that to take place, along with this electrical and welding and HVAC and plumbing and carpentry. So our builders out there need these trades tremendously. I might have this number wrong, but Dave Stormont said that the average age in the trades was, help me out, Rob, was it in the late 40s and 50s?
45.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, late 40s, early 50s. I mean, guys, we need, we need these trades. These builders need these trades. We're gonna, this building's not gonna slow down, and we really, really need this. I see Duke in the audience tonight. He may have something to say about that, but he's been working very, very closely with Dean Sweeney. And Duke, I appreciate all your efforts there to help some of this come to fruition. Got a couple other things, but I want to say that we're somewhat disappointed in the fact of Bowser Town, that we recently, we didn't get approved to move forward to hook into their system. But I've reached out to the mayor, and we're gonna try to sit down with myself and he and several of his board members, our board members, and understand where they're coming from. We understand their concerns, and we appreciate it. And we want to sit down with them, and hopefully, we can work some things out and compromise and make some changes or whatever, and see if it's a possibility that we can certainly work with the town to make this happen. So stay tuned with that, and we'll keep you posted. Looking forward to having constructive meeting with the mayor and several of his members, and perhaps maybe we can come to some agreement on a couple of things. State of the county. Tomorrow, right here in this room, 2:00, right, Dorothy? Please tune in. You can go on our website and get to find the connection to the state of the county. Keep in mind, I hope you got about an hour to spare, maybe about an hour and 15 minutes because we are gonna have some questions. But I've got some, on behalf of this board, I've got some really, really positive things to share with our constituents and what the accomplishments of this board have made in the last year and where we go from here in the future. We've got some exciting things to share with you that we've done in the past year, and we've got some exciting things to share with you about the future of Dare County. So if you got time tomorrow afternoon, 2:00, I would hope that you would certainly tune into that virtual state of the county.
Mr. Chairman, if we're not available at 2, is there a way to pick it up later? Is there?
Oh, absolutely. We're televising it, I mean, we're taping it, excuse me, and it will be on our website. Thank you, Rob, for mentioning that. If you can't tune in tomorrow, you can certainly go back to our website, and it'll be on YouTube, and we'll, we can share with you where to go to view that and watch that. So that completes my chairman's report, but I do have something special I'd like to come down front to do at this time. So bear with me just a minute. I forgot to get a lavalier mic. It'd be a lot easier, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna play, I'm gonna see how amataxtrous I am at holding this and holding this microphone as well. Thank you all for being here this evening. Planning Director Donna Creef. Donna will retire at the end of this month with 33 years of service. I didn't think she was but 37 years old.
That's right.
But from the planning department. You know, Donna's done a just incredible job over the many years and has quite a bit of knowledge and understanding of the county's history with regards to planning, zoning, and how things have evolved over time. Her work has impacted and helped to mow unincorporated areas of Dare, making them what they are today as a great place to live, a great place to work, raise a family, and also vacation. She has, without a doubt, played an integral role in ensuring the county strikes, ensure the county strikes a balance between responsible development and protection of our public lands and natural resources. You know, it's never a time that I pick up the phone and call Donna, and she doesn't, if she doesn't answer immediately, within 10 minutes, she calls me back, and we have a great conversation if I've got some questions about agenda item or something that somebody's brought to my attention. Never is a time that I've walked in her office that I couldn't walk down the hall in her office and sit down with her and not have to make an appointment, that I can just go in there and sit and talk with her, that she doesn't help. No one in those 30-some years that brought an issue to her department. There might have been some sticky issues. As a matter of fact, I know there were, but Donna always tried to find a way to make it work. And that's what service is about, that's what government's about. That's how you help your citizens of Dare. And Donna's been the epitome of that, Donna. It's just been incredible. Let me share some of the incentives that Donna's been involved with, and just bear with me because it might take a couple more minutes. Early in her career, she led the public campaign to approve toll-free telephone calls on Hatteras Island. How about that, Dan?
They were called.
They were. I remember them. Called Hatteras, and you gotta call long distance. She administered a camogrant to construct Sandy Bay Bathhouse on the National Park Service property and for improvements at the Avon Hall over. Reviewed lots of subdivisions, too many to list, Donna. The planning board would sometimes have to meet twice a month just to handle business. It seemed like the second Dare County Board of Commissioners meeting was added because of the planning business. She's attended over 375 planning board meetings. Worked on zoning maps for Hatteras, Avon, Buxton, Collington, Stumpy Point, Mans Harbor, Wine Cheese, and East Lake. Lots of ordinances written and amended, too many to, once again, list. Zoning districts for the zoning maps, gross floor area limitations for commercial structures, revisions to the subdivision ordinance to streamline the process in 2011, flood ordinance updates in 2020, travel trailer park ordinance update in 2021, zoning updates, response to Chapter 160D in 2021, other ordinances, also nuisance ordinances, littering ordinances, the list goes on and on. She's been the principal planner for the 2003-2009 update, the Dare County Land Use Planner. They were written in-house, not by a consultant. The 2021 update is pending completion, and it's in the state review now. Assuming floodplain management duties in 2011 and was the first certified floodplain manager for Dare County, responsible for two class increases of CRS discounts. Most recently, we just got the Class 6 with a 20% discount for property owners in the unincorporated areas of Dare. List goes on and on, Donna. Floodplain Coordinator of the Year in 2014 by North Carolina Division of Management, organized the OBX CRS group in 2017, and serves as the facilitator for the group. The group-led efforts for adoption of local elevation standards in response to the 2020 flood maps by working with towns, Outer Banks home builders, realtors, and insurance agents. She assisted property owners with storm recovery from multiple storms, including drafting substantial language letters for property owners to secure funding to elevate their homes. Recognized by the Outer Banks Chapter in 2019 for work on the zoning amendments to address the housing issues. Just multitude and multitudes of things in her 33-year career. Talked to Terry Wheeler recently, and Terry says, God, she's retired. She needs to apply for the town manager's job at Manio. Donna worked with another close friend of mine right here, who was the former planning director, Ray Sturgis, Ray Sturgis, who passed away several years back, who was a dear friend of mine as well. But that was a hell of a team, the two of them. And then since Donna's taken over, she's just knocked it out of the park as well. Donna, this is just a small token, really, a small token from our board, that we want to present you with a certificate of appreciation. It's from the Dare County Board of Commissioners. We award this certificate to Donna Creef in grateful recognition for her exemplary service and tireless dedication to Dare County for the past 33 years. Creef has played an integral role in ensuring the county strikes and balances between responsible development and the protection of our public land's abundance of natural resources. Due to her decade-long dedication, Dare County successfully maintained the unique charm that it set apart from other coastal communities. In addition, Donna's efforts to address the county's flood-related issues by implementing an array of floodplain management practices and providing storm recovery assistance to area homeowners have had a profound and lasting impact on countless people in Dare County over the years. The Dare County Board of Commissioners salutes Donna Creef for her exemplary service to Dare County, and it's signed by myself, and I'd like to present this to you now, Donna.
Thank you. This means a lot to me. It's my last meeting. It's very momentous for me. It's very bittersweet. It's been a long time coming. 33 years is a long time, and as Bob said, Ray and I made a good team. And then the last 10 years, it's been a solo, solo flight, but I appreciate all the support from the board, from Bobby, that have had the confidence in letting me do my job. I've worked with a lot of great people, all my staff, Dorothy. I don't want to look at Dorothy. I'm gonna get teared up if I look over at Dorothy. I've been with some of my fellow coworkers, Jackie, in the Board of Elections since the beginning of my career, and it's my second family. When they say your work family, it really is your work family. And I've worked with some really good people in the community, and I like to think that I've helped most of them. There have been some sticky situations, Mr. Chairman, some of them where they've kindly asked us to come back to Manio and not come back again, but it's much appreciated in letting me work for Dare County and the citizens of Dare County for the past 33 years. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Donna. Hey, guys, I can't help but ask you guys if y'all want to say a few words while we're standing here.
We're gonna come down and get a picture.
Okay, great. Come on down.
Pictures worth a thousand words.
I continue to hold to my stance that I refuse to accept this resignation. Donna, you will be, you will be missed, Ms. Creef. You will be missed in a big way, so thank you so much.
Hold us in the middle, Donna, and we can all get around each other and sing kumbaya.
You got a purple tile for me today. You're gonna have to Photoshop me in.
Oh, yeah, that's right, Jim. That's right, Jim.
I got something I'm gonna put your picture on in here. Donna, thanks for all you did. We're really gonna miss you.
Thank you.
I gotta say something, guys. So when I was first elected in the town of Kitty Hawk, I went to my fellow commissioners there in town, there in town, and also I went to the town manager. And Donna was over here with Ray Sturgis at the time, and I said, "We need to be user-friendly to the developers. We need to be user-friendly to the residents of Kitty Hawk. We need to make sure that when they come in here, they're not intimidated, that we facilitate and help them do what they need to do on their projects, because when they come in, they're scared anyway." And I said, "We need to be more like Dare County," and that was with Donna. And so they kind of led the way, in my opinion, for the user-friendly that Kitty Hawk is today. It's about the most friendly town to do business, in my opinion, on the Outer Banks. But thanks to you and the way that you did business over here, people followed suit. So you did a great job, and I'm gonna miss you. You know my heart's with planning, being on the planning board for so long, so I'm gonna miss you, definitely.
I said it once, I'll just repeat it. We're gonna miss you a lot, Donna. Best wishes, obviously, and you've left some very lasting legacy items in your years, and I've learned a ton from you since, basically, I started from knowing nothing, and you've helped me all along the way, so thank you very much.
Congratulations. You have made our job a lot easier with your explanations, your due diligence, and your thoughtfulness for the citizens of Dare County. For that and for 33 years, thank you and congratulations.
Donna, I've never known anybody north of that bridge to get a pass, but you get one down south.
Donna, I'd just like to extend my congratulations as well, and if there's one thing that I would want to thank you for more than anything else, it would be your patience, especially with me and the time that you have spent with me to explain things and the way this county works. I truly appreciate you. Dare County is gonna miss you.
Amen. Thank you. You know, those are the, those are the tough ones. Those are the tough ones you have to do, and what's so difficult and tough about it is we know we've got capable people to step in, but just the relationship that you build over years, you come to rely on that tremendously. And as I said down front, we're, county's blessed to have that kind of talent for that length of time is, once again, second to none, second to none. Donna, I still have your cell phone number, so don't think you're going too far. County manager?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. That brings us to item two on the agenda, which is public comment. Ladies and gentlemen, now's the time, it's been set aside for a public comment. If you have public comment this evening, you can come forward, come to the podium, state your name and where you're from. Please limit your comments to five minutes. When the green light comes on, when you begin your remarks, there'll be a yellow light that will come on when you have about a minute left. And when the red light comes on, you need to conclude your remarks at that time. I have a sign-up sheet here, and the first person on the sign-up sheet is Catherine Heath.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Catherine Heath, and I live in Kitty Hawk. And yes, it's a great town to live in. And I just had two comments on your comments about the COVID cases, and I hope you keep in mind that with the great increase we've had of people running to get tested, that you're gonna see more cases. And with the problems that we see we're having with the reliability of the testing, cases doesn't necessarily mean sick people, and I hope you can try to sort that out. But to my comments, as I said, I But to my comments, as I said, I wanted to commend the commissioners on recently re-adopting the resolution against Agenda 21. I believe you took this action in full awareness of how the UN Agenda has been adapted and integrated into our federal, state, and local governments. Twenty years ago, I began to see the connection. I had taken on an effort to help the people of North Carolina change a state law that many homeowners felt were trampling on the property rights that they held under the Constitution of our United States and ratified by the state of North Carolina. As I researched these property issues, it led me into a deep look at land use planning from the bottom to the top. I found smart growth and sustainable development guidelines that were put together by the American Planning Association in collaboration with nongovernmental interested parties. These guidelines were delivered to and implemented by HUD on the federal level attached to funding to the states. This impacted transportation, affordable housing, state and local land use planning, and more. But we're once again seeing an expansion of directives coming down from the federal level to the states and local governments and schools under the umbrella of emergency powers for health and safety. I hope in all of this, you can see how the carrot and stick are once again being used to erode our constitutional rights. With that, I will share with you my comments to the Dare School Board, because they apply to everyone in an elected or appointed position in the United States government. You have all stepped up to fill these board positions on behalf of your fellow citizens in the Dare County community. You asked the community to choose you for this responsibility, and the community did so. You are here to represent the people of your community, and when you took on this responsibility, you, like others chosen to represent the people, took a solemn oath to protect and defend the Constitution of the United States and the state of North Carolina. This oath is your primary guiding directive. When you stepped up to take on this responsibility, most of the people of your community should and do appreciate it. This is not your full-time job, and you've taken it on in addition to the other responsibilities of your lives. In all of this, we ask that you take care not to lose sight of where your responsibility and allegiance lies, which is clearly stated in your oath. In this constitutional republic that we have, it is the people who govern. It is at this local level that the governance of the state and nation begin. It proceeds from the roots up like a strong tree. It does not proceed from the top down. And like a tree, if you weigh down upon and smother the roots, the tree dies. Nurture the tree of liberty, do not smother it. We've been living through transformations of the model of government that derives from the roots up to one that increasingly imposes itself from the top down. Governance through bureaucrats and experts limiting liberty and imposing behavior, eroding freedom little by little. Our N C Constitution states in Article 1, Section 35, that as citizens of the state, we have a duty to the absolute necessity of preserving the blessings of liberty by a frequent recurrence to fundamental principles. The time to do that is now. I ask that you reread that oath you swore to when you took on the responsibility that the people of this community chose you to take on. I know that it's not easy, but turn off the noise. Choose your constitutional oath over flattery, over self-promotion, over money, over pursue, perceive safety rather than liberty and fidelity to our constitutions. And I've given you a packet with a resolution that I'm asking you to please consider adopting to affirm your commitment to our constitutional rights. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Duke Garrity.
Welcome this evening, Duke.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Good to see you. I got a lot of paperwork here, but don't be scared. Mr. Chairman, I would thank you for your kind words before about our project at COA. It took a couple of years of planning and going through some regulations to get where we're going. It's just a start. We're going to be there for the long haul. We're going to get their programs all going, and we'll see what we can do to continue it. And I also would like to piggyback on a little bit what you said before about Donna Creef. In the planning department, we had one of our committee meetings, and somebody made the announcement a few months ago, Donna Creef was going to retire. And the room got quiet, and everybody looked around and said, what are we going to do now? A testament to her was when we, we discussed this. We have six towns and two counties that we build in and we deal with, and it's not always cordial sometimes as far as permitting processes and things that we're going through and zoning changes. And they would say, what do you want to do? I said, well, just be like Dare County. I said, do what they do, do how we do it over there. Donna, thank you very much. I see on the agenda, we are going to talk about ADUs again. I'm very happy about it. You remember a couple of years ago, I said I'm a big proponent of it. I would encourage the chairman, maybe tomorrow, in your state of the county message, maybe you could tell Perry, there's going to be some changes to them, we're going to expand the rules. The White Paper Report, we got some staff, I read it. I don't think it could be any stronger than it is right now. I agree with the planning director. One of the big things that we have to remember here is these have got to be for long-term uses, or it'll be the Airbnb capital of the world. Maybe we need to put a permit, a fee on that and make it a permit, so it's conditional use and it's not a right. And I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know how to make that work, but that did work. Previous place where I used to live, and it gave them the right to go in and inspect it, check smoke detectors. It was a yearly fee of $100 if you want to rent your place out long-term for a small $100 fee, but that gave you the right to go in and check parking spaces, smoke detectors, things like that, and it did work. But we've got to make sure that it is for long-term rentals and not for weekly rentals. There was something in there about, it was singling out all the zoning districts, the covenants and the subdivisions that should be excluded. I don't know if we should exclude anything. We should make it the responsibility of the homeowners association to enforce their covenants. I don't know if that's the county's job or not. We should maybe work on some kind of a policy that we can see if they'll change their covenants. A lot of the covenants have expired. A lot of them, mine included, have no homeowners association. There's nobody to enforce them. There's nobody to look at plans, and we still have empty lots, and we're building on. There's never been a process there. So the other suggestion, maybe, and I don't know how, I mean, I know we can make this work a little bit, but we've known how much the chamber has been involved in this, property managers, realtors, home builders associations, and we got to promote it, because it is a short-term answer. It's one of the tools we can use to fund some essential workforce housing. And I know how much you want to do that, as much as we do. We can't find workers mainly in a lot of places, because we don't have places for them to live. So thank you again for bringing it up. You said you were bringing it up again when you passed this two years ago, and I'm happy to do anything the Home Builders Association can do to encourage it a little more. We're here to help. Thank you.
Thank you, Duke. Appreciate it. Thank you for being here.
Next is Reese Stecher.
I'm sorry, I didn't get the last name, Reese.
Stecher, S-T-E-C-H-E-R.
Thank you, Reese, for being here.
Thank you for having me, and I'm not trying to pick a fight with you, but I just had COVID for the second time a couple of weeks ago, and I have been vaccinated. Which brings me to, I had no clue I was going to do this, but this is from Outer Banks Voice today. One data point missing in the January 18 update is the breakdown of overall weekly cases by vaccine status. In a response to the Voice, DHH Secretary Sheila Davies indicated that part of the problem with reporting the data now is the sheer volume of cases. Due to high number of positive cases and unavailability of some new data due to the Mako drive-through testing, we can no longer calculate reliable breakthrough case percentages, nor can we provide accurate data. So basically, the way I'm reading this is, they really don't have accurate data on people that have been vaccinated that are getting COVID a second time, like the person standing right here talking to you. Which brings me to why I came here in the first place. Last time I was here, we spoke to you guys about making a positive antibody test, a way for our kids to be able to be kids again and go back to school and stay out of quarantine. And it seemed like there was a positive response with you all on that. I'm here to remind you all of that. I believe y'all told me that we would have to wait, if that was funded, to where it could be funded, to where every kid in Dare County could have a shot at that positive antibody test, that it couldn't happen until June, when you guys approved the budget, if I remember correctly. I'm not 100% sure, but I wanted to put that back on the table and make sure that you guys hadn't forgotten about that. But here we go back to Sheila Davies. At the meeting, the school board meeting on the 12th of January, Sheila said that a positive antibody test, which a precedent's already been set, is now no longer an option to keep your kids out of quarantine. And I'm scratching my head and trying to understand, how, when we're this far into this thing, it's not in lungs anymore, it's in your nose and your throat now, we're on the back end of this thing, how is it all of a sudden we're going backwards, and we're pulling something from the table that could let our kids get back to being kids again and being back in school? So the main point to be in here is to put that back in y'all's minds, and if that has been pulled off the table, some of these, you guys, somebody, we need help getting that back on the table, because we need to get our kids back in school year-round, full-time. This is old information. I don't know if it was a month ago, three, four weeks ago, there were 28 million adolescents in America. 28 million adolescent school-age kids in America. Thirty-four deaths of those adolescents. Zero COVID deaths in North Carolina. Suicides in North Carolina, that's something we've tried and tried to get a number from Sheila, she won't give it to us. But what we do know in America, suicides are up 51% in adolescents, more so in females than in males. But suicides are up 51%. Based on the data and the figures that we have from Sheila, we've got that guesstimated to be somewhere around 109 children died in North Carolina of suicide over the last year. Zero deaths of COVID, yet we're still, we're still keeping our kids, who have a 0% chance of dying of COVID, in masks, and we're keeping our kids from being kids. And I know you guys, every one of you guys watches football, and there's been a lot of football getting watched the last couple, two, three weeks. Some of those stadiums almost have 100,000 people in them. 100,000 mostly adults, higher risk than kids. The kids have .0000974, 74% chance. But we're still trying to put masks on our kids in the schools. I mean, at some point, it's got to end. How is it 100,000 people can sit in a football stadium, sandwich side to side to side, not six foot apart, and none of them have to wear a mask, but our kids, who have .00074% chance of getting COVID, still have to wear masks? And I guess another thing to bring to your attention, if you all did not already know about it, we have our school board members who are elected. Susan Bothwell has been, we're two years and three weeks into this, into COVID. All of the school board members have been great with responding to us, answering our questions, emails, texts, phone calls. Susan Bothwell will not answer an email, a text, a phone call. Susan Bothwell, two years and three weeks into COVID, would not cast a vote en masse last week. She abstained. That's unacceptable. If she doesn't want to do the job, we got to get somebody in there that does. Thank you.
Thank you, Reese.
Next, we have Megan Kendall.
Sorry, Bobby.
Megan Kendall.
Ms. Kendall, welcome.
First of all, I would like to inform you that with all due respect, a lot of us are not going to get vaccinated.
That's fine with you, ma'am.
And I'm going to speak, it's my five minutes.
Well, I'll respond.
We don't understand your imagined authority to give medical prescriptions while the Supreme Court is still debating mandating an emergency use authorization product. I pray my words fall on open hearts, since the Lord has written his law on our hearts, and that's how we know right from wrong. My name is Megan. I'm grateful for the opportunity to provide public comment. To quote Reverend Martin Luther King, "Faith is taking the first step even when you don't see the whole staircase. Everything that is done in the world is done by hope. Even if I knew that tomorrow the world would go to pieces, I would still plant my apple tree." That's why I haven't stopped contacting you for two years. Thank God for my friends that I found at Dare to Share OBX. We are the kind of people who don't ever give up. We have radical faith. We're not afraid, and we're not going anywhere. I have several topics God has placed on my heart, so let's go. I was recently reviewing your former bodies meeting notes from control group meetings in March 2020, which the community should know was illegal and disbanded, and now you're the commissioners. And that's when the Great Reset, the Fourth Industrial Revolution, or Agenda 21 2030 was rolling out. Mr. Woodard, you wrote something along the lines of, we have no history to guide us. While at the time, you may have felt like that was true, we now know that concerned citizen after concerned NRPO appealed to you with science, actual citations, and letting you know they had the ability to make their own health decisions, unlike our health director, who can only relay information from the state. I'm sorry, but she is unqualified to give medical advice or endorse medical products or devices. Here we are, two years later, sharing the same factual and evidence-based information that conflicts with a lot of what public health professionals are pushing. Have you heard of a low acidic diet, or drinking a lot of water, eating vegetables, right? They tell us the three Ws. Remember the summer of glove? Like, there's this thing called universal precautions. When you remove your gloves, you stick your thumb in there so you don't contaminate it. I was getting lunch meat the other day, and the man wiped his fingers on his mask and continued to cut meat. I mean, what are we doing here? Okay? And he has no choice but to wear that mask, that service worker, because he has to do that to make an income. Okay? There, DHHS is submitting to insurance companies for reimbursement for administration of the vaccine, according to your website's FAQ, making a revenue and therefore creating a huge conflict of interest, the way this vaccine is being promoted by the Dare County government, right here in this meeting. Okay? Conflict of interest. Dr. Legay, who sat with Sheila Davies, he was the, he was the doctor that almost all the parents suggested I go to when I moved here, because he accepts parents who don't vaccinate their children. He doesn't argue with them. Okay? Sheila sent Dare County Schools a meme saying students can be denied access to an education if they do not get a meningitis vaccine. That's a half-truth. It's not what the general statutes of North Carolina say. It's not what the legislators passed. And reminder, executive branch does not make laws. Okay? You also had to correct a post, thank you, to the attorney here in the room, when the Dare County Schools were promoting a biologic experimental injection as an approved product for teens. Thank you again for correcting your error, but how can we expect to rely on DHHS for accurate data? How can a county agency promote a product they may profit from? Where is the true informed consent? Okay? And now you're not even reporting the vaccine status. Is any of the information reliable that we've had at all? Can you verify it? Okay, so we know about this two-week buffer post-vaccination, right, to be considered vaccinated, but let's talk about Pfizer, a criminal organization, basically. They just paid a $2.3 billion fine for the harm caused for off-market recommendations of drugs. Healthcare workers are still routinely giving OxyContin to babies for stitches in the hospital and emergency rooms. So if you have any hope of the opioid crisis going away, it's not. Okay? In that same vein, we have a serious addiction problem, right, substance abuse problem right in our county. We know about our local high school student. You know, this Gate Park email, Doug Doughty agrees with me on that. I talked to him about it. Since you interrupted me, I'm just going to let everybody know that the masks for sale at local stores were not only made in China, they were made in China during the pandemic. I have a friend in China. I sent her a label that said, she said, "That's for dust and sun protection only. Made in April 2020 in China." And that's what we're putting on our children. So you can stop talking about COVID at any time. That's your So you can stop talking about COVID at any time, that's your choice. Thank you. And if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Any other public comment here tonight? Anybody else like to speak at public comment? Seeing none here, any public comment from Buxton?
No comment from Buxton.
With that, Mr. Chairman, we would conclude the public comment, and we would move on to item number three. This is a public hearing on the Julia Taft-Buxton zoning amendment. At the last meeting, Donna briefed you on what that was all about. In order to move forward with her request, we have to have a public hearing tonight. I will conduct that public hearing now. The rules of this public hearing will be the same as the rules that we had for a public comment. On my sign-up sheet, I don't have anyone signed up for that. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak to that issue? Seeing none, is there anyone from Buxton that would like to speak to that issue?
No comment from Buxton.
With that, Mr. Chairman, we close the public hearing on this issue, and Donna.
I would like to say that over the course of the past couple of weeks, we have received some emails about this, comments to the Board of Commissioners. I have a copy of 15 emails in support of Mrs. Taft's rezoning request. They will be entered into the record. As Mr. Outen said at our meeting, when we scheduled the public hearing, this is a rezoning, and that there's some things that we need to go into a little bit more detail, and so I'm gonna go over some of the information that's in my staff report, so that that is reflected in the record in order for the board to make their recommendation and their action tonight. So Ms. Taft is applying for a rezoning for 48651 NC-12 Highway in Buxton. She's asking for it to be changed from its current classification of R2A to R3. Section 60, Section 2286 of the zoning ordinance establishes the procedures for zoning map amendments. This is a zoning map amendment versus a text amendment where you're actually going in and changing the zoning classification as it is on the zoning map. A statement of consistency and a statement of reasonableness has to be issued by the board in order to act on the rezoning. These statements can be combined, and that is the standard practice that the board does. So the first item that you have to address is the consistency with the Dare County land use plan, and there's two elements of the plan that affect this, are the policies that are in the plan, as well as the future land use map. So the applicable policy is Policy LUC 4, which talks about the housing needs of the year-round population, and how multifamily dwellings are considered appropriate alternatives in those areas zoned for multifamily structures, and that the diversification of housing opportunities is important to address the housing needs of Dare County's workforce. The future land use map also classifies the areas of Buxton there as community residential, and that land classification is applied to those areas that are zoned R1, R2A, and R3. So the R3 district is in that classification, as well as the R2A, which is the zoning classification as it applies now. Based on the review of the policy that I quoted to you and the future land classification, it is my opinion that the zoning map amendment is consistent with the land use plan, and that determination can be made. There's also the reasonableness of the request that has to be evaluated, and there are five factors listed in the zoning ordinance that are to be considered when we're doing map amendments. That first factor is the size, the physical condition, and the other attributes of the area. The property has an existing building on it that is 4,600 square feet, it's a 35,500-square-foot site. The building has been used historically for decades as a childcare facility. Ms. Taft is seeking to reclassify that from R2A, which does not allow multifamily structures, to R3, which does allow multifamily structures at a density of 10 units per acre. The size of the tract would allow and accommodate, or would accommodate up to eight units under this density limit. The topography of the site is similar to the other ones in the area. It has 154 feet of road frontage. The Cape Hatteras School is across the street from it. There are, the adjoining parcels are all similarly sized, of about 19,000 square feet or so, with residential structures on them. Approximately 174 feet west of the site, there is a large area zone, C3 commercial, and I included a copy of the Buxton zoning map in your packet. You'll see the layout of the commercial and the residential districts throughout the village of Buxton. The second factor is the benefits and the detriments to the landowners, the neighbors, and the surrounding community. As I said, there is a structure there that has been historically used for commercial purposes. We did a zoning map for Buxton back in 1993, and for whatever reason, this property was not zoned commercial then. It probably should have been, but it was not. That lack of commercial zoning is a detriment to the current property owner. The current property owner has submitted a letter in support of Ms. Taft's request. The planning board comments, during the planning board review, we did receive comments from one of the adjoining property owners expressing concern, that concerns that were based on the use of the building for multifamily structures, and she was basing her concerns on issues that she has with one of the adjoining property owners. That really is something that would occur whether the rezoning request was coming in or not. Multifamily housing is considered a residential use, and it is a lower intensity use than a commercial childcare facility. Under the R2A zoning, the existing structure could be remodeled and used as a duplex, a fish house, or a real estate office. And so those are considered commercial uses that are allowed in the R2A residential district. The use of the site for housing would be a benefit for the community by increasing the housing inventory, and thus supporting the sustainability of the seven businesses owned by Ms. Taft. The third factor is the relationship between the current actual and permissible development and the development permissible under the proposed amendment. As I just stated, the R2A does allow some commercial districts, some commercial uses. The R3 allows multifamily. That's the main difference between the R2A and the R3, the multifamily in the R3, and then that handful of commercial uses in the R2A. I included a matrix in your packet of all of the uses of the R2A and the R3, so you can see that. And when you compare the two districts, the disparity between the two, the intensity of the uses is small. Why the action taken is in the public interest, and I think this is the most important factor of the request, for years since 2018, the board has been working on housing, and this has become, over the course of those two years, the primary goal of the board. I've stood up here on the past two years and done other zoning amendments that reflect the indirect involvement, as the board has also made direct involvement with financial contributions and been trying to construct on property that the county owns of affordable housing. The rezoning is consistent with this goal of the board. Any increase in the housing units, even a modest increase, will have positive impacts on the community, and therefore, I think it can be found to be in the public interest. Any change conditions warranting the amendment, that's the fifth factor. I think the popularity of Airbnbs and, you know, rent-your-own-house out, Mr. Garrity talked about Airbnbs, and how the accessory dwelling units need to be tied to long-term rentals, and I think that what's happened with the popularity of these rental platforms is that some of the homes that used to be available were offered by the property owners for year-round housing have been, have transitioned to Airbnbs, and so I think that can be identified as a changing condition. And Mr. Woodard, Chairman Woodard, commented on this last week, or last meeting, when we were scheduling the hearing, about how the trend has been for the local businesses to buy housing and provide housing for their employees as part of their employment factor. So based on a review of those five factors, I think it can be found, or at least it's my opinion, that the request is reasonable and can be found in the public interest, based on the potential of the housing opportunities, which in turn affects the longevity of the local business and the local economy. You guys have completed all of the tasks that you need to, to act on this tonight. Any favorable action does need to include that statement of consistency and state of reasonableness that I included in your packet, and I will stop right there. Ms. Taft is here, if you want to hear from her, she's traveled up from Buxton, and I know she's very interested in this, and I'll stop right there and have, entertain any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Donna. Thank you, Ms. Taft, for being here. Does the board have any questions of Donna or Ms. Taft?
No, I think the packet's pretty much cut and dry.
Thank you, Commissioner. Well, with that being said, what is the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I move that the zoning classification of 48651 NC-12 Highway be changed to R3 residential as recommended by the planning board. I find the map amendment to be consistent with the Dare County land use plan, and to be reasonable, and in the public interest of Dare County. The statement of consistency and reasonableness attached to the staff report is adopted as part of this motion.
Second.
This motion's been made by Commissioner Bateman, it's been seconded by Commissioner Couch. Is any further questions they may have, or any comments? Hearing none, then the pleasure of the board is? Those in favor? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Donna. Ms. Taft, thank you for coming up this way, this evening.
Chairman, item four on the agenda is another public hearing. This is a public hearing with regard to the Series 2022A and V Limited Obligation Bonds. The rules for the other public hearings apply. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to that issue tonight? See, no one here. Is there anyone in Buxton would like to speak to that issue?
No comment from Buxton.
With that, Mr. Chairman, I would close the public hearing. There's no action here that needs to be taken, and then items five and six, they'll also handle those.
Good evening, Dave.
And seven. Five, six, and seven, Dave.
First item is an amendment to the Capitol Project Ordinance for the Buxton and Avon Beach Nurishment Project. What this is doing is, when we originally adopted the budget for the Coastal Science and Engineering Contract, that contract had groin restoration fees in it. After a memorable meeting in Little Washington, we found out that was not permissible, so it's removing that from your budget. We're adding the CSE estimate for five-year post-project monitoring for the Buxton project. You added the Avon estimate at your prior meeting, and then we're adding the ecological monitoring requirements per the National Park Service permit for both projects. And I admitted that we're also adjusting the amounts for the sand fencing and vegetative planting down to the bid amount for the bids we conducted. So, yeah, two attachments. The first one is a total project update, showing the coastal science and engineering amounts per project off to the right side. The Great Lakes dredging bid amount of $25,870, coming to a grand total project of $29,837,636. I did the second page, so we can start keeping track of the history of the, what we've done to the budget. That page includes $215,000 in cost issuance for the debt, so we're grand totals at $30,052,636. And we're asking you to adopt the amendment to the Capitol Project Ordinance, which is the third page.
Okay, any questions today?
It sounds like the total that you're asking us to increase, if I can figure this out, Dave, is roughly $280,000 from these budget amendments?
Two, 280.
Yep.
Yeah, it's on page 25, I think, if I add down those four numbers. Okay.
Pleasure of the board?
Move to approve.
There's a motion on the floor by the vice chairman to approve, it's been seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign? Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you. And I should add, it, we're, we're set for the Local Government Commission meeting on February the 1st. We got the permits, all as been signed on Thursday of last week, and you'll be doing your final resolution for the debt at your next meeting on February the 7th, and we're closing February 15th.
Dave, it's remarkable the speed and efficiency with which the LGC has moved to accommodate us, so I think we... Sorry, sorry, just, it came out, I didn't want it to come out.
Actually, it is. All things considered.
They haven't had a problem with us this time. We were able to get the court to get us our permits barely in time.
Yeah, good.
All right, then the next item is EMS stations that the chairman had previously...
Dave, is the next one the CSE contract?
Yep.
Oh, the contract amendments. I didn't even print that one out. Sorry, those are the amendments that I just spoke of, to their existing contracts, to add the five-year monitoring in for Buxton, and then the two ecological monitoring for both projects, and that, as I said, that's a condition of the National Park Service And we're asking you to approve, it's actually in two amendments, one, Amendment One and Amendment Three, and authorize the county manager to sign both of those amendments.
Okay, you lost me here, Dave.
Any, any questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to go over, one, just so I'm clear again what I'm voting for. We had a whole series of, a bunch of budget amendments just a minute ago for Avon and Buxton. This is now Avon, Buxton, again.
Yes, sir.
This is for the, you, you did the budget amendments in the last thing we did. This is for the contract itself with CSE to say, we're, we now have a budget to pay you, now we're amending their contract to pay him what you just put in the budget.
And the numbers are substantially different because...
The deduct for the groin work that was in the original contract.
See, this is where the reconciliations help me, where I see, here's what was, here's what is, here's what changed. This is what I want you to approve, because I don't remember the groin in the original guidance.
In the original contract, what they were recommending is, is that we repair the groin at the lighthouse. As we got into the permitting process, that was gonna be a long and drawn-out ordeal, and would take us longer to put sand on the beaches. We would be another two or three years getting that permit, rather than trying to start a project this year. So we pulled the groin work out of the plan back then, so that we could move forward with the beach nourishment projects. This is the deduct, because they didn't have to do all that work that we had planned in the original contract.
Cost increase, okay, I'm just reading. Amendment Three will increase 700,000. Amendment One is 600, so it's $1,003,400.
Right, and the other piece that I missed was...
That's a lot.
We, we added part of the budget for this at your last meeting.
Okay. You guys see how it can be difficult to track all these moving parts?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm, I'm trying, sincerely. I just, I don't know what I'm being asked to approve sometimes. So we're, you're asking for approval for $1.3 million more to the contract with CSE?
Yes, sir.
And the funding for the $1.3 is contained in, and a part of the 28.5 limited obligation bonds we just, or, sorry, that went up to a total of $30 million something, if I'm recalling. $30,052,636. So we've approved the bonds for the funding. This is now an approval to amend the contract to pay the funding to CSE.
Correct.
Okay.
You get, you get what you need?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, then, what's the pleasure of the board?
Approve Amendment Number Three and Amendment Number One, and authorize the county manager to sound, sign both proposals, please.
Thank you, Commissioner Couch, and is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner House. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, then those that signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous.
No, I just...
So now the item for Oakley Collier and Associates for the EMS station. In the packet is what we're calling Service Order Number Four to the Oakley Collier Mast... In the packet is what we're calling service order number four to the Oakley Collier Master Services Agreement that the board approved prior, earlier in the year when we did RFQ for architectural services. So we have a master contract, and we're adding amendments to that, Oakley Collier Cosm Service Orders. Then on September the ninth, you approved the design contract, which said their fees would be ten percent of, not the grand total, but it's ten percent of the actual construction contracts when they're finalized. This, this is using their estimates for those construction contracts. Also on the seventh, you budgeted two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, and that was just to get them to legally start at work on the designs. And they have done that, which the board got and approved on December the third. This amendment establishes a contract and a budget for the design based on those estimates. And at ten percent, grand total is four million seven-hundred-four thousand three hundred dollars. And Oakley Collier provided the detail of the breakdown for each project on page three of their contract amendment. And on the very last page of their contract amendment, they've got a breakdown of their cost estimates by project, which includes Kilville Hills, Manio Frisco, Southern Shores, Rodanthe, and Dare Med Flight, and renovations to the Mans Harbor facility. Of that amount, partners, Kilville Hills would be responsible for seven-hundred-and-seventy, five-hundred-and-forty-four of the design fees, and Chickamaconico Volunteer Fire Department is five-hundred-and-thirty, oh fifty-nine of the design fees. There has been one change since your approval on December third. And on that schedule, it showed that part of the cost of that project was Southern Shores. But all of that project, the county managers advise should be the county. The handouts that Cheryl just gave you summarizes the projects and Oakley Collier's estimated cost and how much belongs to the county and how much belongs to each partner. Those include the design fees. And then the second page is the breakdown of the Oakley Collier design fees by project. What you're asked to do is to approve the Oakley Collier Service Order Number Four. Authorize the chairman to execute that and approve the amendment that's included to the capital project ordinance.
Any questions today of the board with respect to item seven?
Once again, it's about three-point-three mil, three-point-four million dollars we're being asked to approve, Dave?
Well, the grand total includes the partner's share, so you're being asked to approve the contracts in the county's name. So you're being asked to approve the total amount of four-point-seven.
Right.
The three-point, three, three-point-four is the county's share.
Right, I'm counting on KDH and Rodanthe being good for it.
Right.
So it's a three-point, three-point-four.
Rodanthe is. Don't know about Kilville Hills.
No.
I'd like to make a motion to OCA Service Order Number Four. Authorize the chairman to execute and approve the amendment to the capital project ordinance.
Thank you, Commissioner House. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by the vice chair. Floor, once again, is open for additional comments, questions?
Just a quick clarification again, if I could. On page thirty-eight, Dave, we've got the architectural services at four million four fifty-four and geothermal, geotechnical, excuse me, at two oh one, which is about four million six fifty-five. But we do have four million seven, so we'll be funding an additional roughly fifty thousand dollars. I was looking for where that was.
It is.
I just wanted to reconcile that. I've got that.
Design fees. Sorry. Uh, sorry, in the, in their detail, they've just called it all design fees.
Yeah, I think the, the section four of the three million three fifty-four should probably be three million four, about three million four even. Again, it's not material to approve or disapprove. I just want to make sure we got the numbers. Okay.
Sorry, I do not have an answer because they have...
Okay, that's okay, that's okay. We can check it later. Like I said, it's not, it's not material to our decision.
Anyone else? All right, there's a motion on the floor. Is those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed, like, sign? Motion carries unanimous.
Chairman, while we're on EMS, two things that I'd like just to point out for your informational purposes. One is, on there, we've got a placeholder for Nagseth, and we don't know yet what's going to happen in Nagseth, but we do have a meeting set up to talk with them in February. And so hopefully we'll get some more clarity on their direction so that we can make some plans with our direction.
That's a space we share with their fire station, isn't it, Bobby? But it's actually too small for us right now?
That's correct. And they want to demolish it and build a whole new facility.
Yeah.
And so that doesn't lend to us modifying it. So we've got to kind of work with them to figure out what they want to do. And I think they've now acquired an adjacent piece of property, and so how all this plays together, we don't know yet. And so we've got a placeholder in it for it. The other thing that's maybe more important is the Kitty Hawk project is shown on here at one-point-six, which was the last number we had. More recently, and after this was prepared, we've had some conversation with them. They're afraid that number's going up, is going to be more than that. Our architect kind of ensured that their numbers are right, and so we're kind of at a standstill. We have a meeting set up with them, I don't remember what date it is, it might be this week.
I think it's this week.
To go through the programming with the architect on our side of the project to try to pin down what that number actually might be in his opinion. We have kind of agreed among ourselves that we'll let this go to bid. And if the bid comes in at some number we can't absorb, then we'll have to value engineer or change what we do on our side of the project to get our part of it to a number that we can absorb. And so I'm just telling you that because I don't know that we're locked in on that one-point-six there. That, that may not be enough. And if you compare that to what it's costing us in our other projects, it's, it would be a little bit low compared to what we're doing for other EMS stations. So just be aware that we'll have that discussion as we know more.
And they just issued an RFQ for a construction manager at risk, so we'll, we'll have that conversation when the architect finishes the schematic design and they have a schematic design estimate.
That brings us to item eight on the agenda, and this is the accessory dwelling units zoning amendment. Commissioner Overman's out. We've had some discussions about, and this is for guidance, this isn't for action tonight, but some discussions about whether or not it would make sense or is appropriate to open up the accessory dwelling units to more of the zones in the county than we currently do. And with the idea being that those accessory dwelling units would give an opportunity for affordable housing in some places. We recognize there are some conversations about covenants prohibiting it, and that would mean that in some subdivisions it couldn't be done under their covenants, even if it could be done, you know, under our zoning rules. And, and the guidance that we need is, is this something that you all are interested in doing? And if you are, then we'll have Donna and Noah take this to the planning board to try to flesh out what they think, get some recommendations from you, find out, you know, if they think that it isn't a good idea, then they'll tell you that. If they think it's something that we can do, then they can come back and, and, you know, under what conditions, what zones, how should it work, what rules should we have, those kind of things, and bring those back. But before we decided to tackle this with the planning board, we wanted to be sure we were going in a direction that you all approved of. So really what we're asking for is guidance from here going forward.
Do you need consensus or you need a motion?
Just, I need consensus is enough, as long as I know I'm not treading on thin water when we go to the planning board.
I only have one question. If we go into this and it'd be, might be a lengthy process, can we make sure that Donna Creese stays the planning director for the entire length of this project?
I think we'll, we'll handle it appropriately.
I have a question.
I'm trying, folks.
I just need a temperature reading on whether or not some of these restrictive covenants and non-incorporated dare, is that a number that on the surface is large or is it going to be a non-issue?
First of all, I can't tell you how many, how many subdivisions have restrictive covenants. And if I could, I couldn't tell you what they say. From our perspective, from the county perspective alone, we can't regulate based on restrictive covenants. So if something meets our ordinances, then as far as we're concerned, that level of permitting, that use is allowed. It doesn't mean you can do it, because you've got another level of permitting at your homeowners association. And if your homeowners association is such in a written covenant that prohibits, then you're prohibited whether we allow it or not. So we don't look at the covenants when we start looking at whether it complies. If it complies with our zoning, then by law, we have to grant the permit. And if, if there's a covenant issue, then that's between the property owners association and the homeowners. And I don't think we can put something in our ordinance that says you can do this only if it meets the covenants, because then we become the arbiter of whether it meets their covenants or not. And that's not our role, and nor do we have the authority to interpret their covenants. So that would be on them.
I'm, I'm not totally clear what you're asking us for tonight on this issue.
Well, I guess, are we, are we comfortable moving forward to look at allowing accessory dwelling units across most of the residential zoning districts in the county rather than the limited that we have it in right now?
Okay.
I think why not?
Yeah, why not? Absolutely.
I'm looking for an answer for why not.
We've been working toward this very moment for some time.
That's right, absolutely.
Exactly.
I mean, we've been pushing for this.
Yeah, so again, is, is there a reason that we would say no?
Before we take, this isn't a minor thing for the planning board to do.
Right.
But before we start engaging in amending our ordinances to the scale, we're going to have to do this. We want to be sure that there's a comfort level at your thing to undergo the work that needs to be done to do that. And to get, and it may come back that for reasons we don't know about at the moment, the planning board would say, we don't think this is a good idea. You don't have to accept their recommendations, but at least you have heard from the planning board to know where they stand.
That's right. Well, we need to know if it'll work.
Then know if it'll work.
The housing issue is all hands on deck for us.
Absolutely.
And so I, I don't see a reason not to.
Absolutely.
I'm looking, I'm seeing all head nods, and so absent somebody telling me to stop, then we're going to move forward.
Well, we have a consensus to do it, certainly to do that.
Well, I, I've got something to say. I think there should be something in there to ensure that these aren't used as VRBOs or whatever that is, you know,
Thanks, Jim.
For tourists.
Yeah, right. And, and that's part of what the planning board hopefully will come up with is the rules and the ways to do that. And whatever they recommend, we have to vet, and, and we can amend them and change them, and we've got to have public hearings. We've got to go through that whole process to do anything, but...
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, some time ago, we discussed this. And we talked about if we were going to do this, there was a requirement that they would, that it would have to be leased for a minimum of a year. Am I, is that, am I, is that not correct, Donna? Or have I misled with that?
You're correct in that when we added the ADUs in two thousand and eighteen to those districts that were not the single-family districts, there is a requirement that they be used for long-term occupancy, which is defined in the zoning ordinance as thirty-one days or more. So that standard is already in the books. The idea would be to extend that to these, or do we, or is the housing crisis such that we need to get rid of that? And what I'm hearing is that there needs to continue to be that nexus between the ADUs in these districts and the long-term occupancy. I'm just going to add on something that Mr. Garrity said about opening up to all of the single-family districts. In my staff report, I narrowed it down to some based on my knowledge of where there's covenants and where there's likely to be a conflict. And I understand that it's not the county's responsibility to enforce those covenants. But I'm also thinking that there's no need for the planning board or for the Board of Commissioners to schedule a public hearing for the R4 zoning district, which applies to Collington Harbor subdivision, where we know they have a very active homeowners association, or to Martin's point, where we know they have a very active homeowners association and get all those people riled up. So they're coming in front of you. So just go ahead and take that off of the table. And so that was why I did that analysis and, and just didn't include it for all of the single-family. Now, it may be that the planning board says, sure, put it back on the table. I'm, you know, I'm, this is my small on song, guys. I'm out of here, but...
And certainly if those subdivisions decided they wanted it, they could always come to us and say, please add us too.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Right. And, and when Commissioner and Overman and I were talking about that, there, we had talked about the idea of having an amendment and adopting the amendment with an effective date that allowed some of these older subdivisions to do the research and maybe come in and at least notify the staff, hey, there's going to be an issue here. Because we don't want to create issues for property owners with the covenants. But, you know, some of these older subdivisions are exactly that, and the covenants have expired, and the housing has reached the crisis issue, you know, crisis point. And I'm not saying that lightly, we've been working on this for two years, and this is a constant, constant theme here. And so I think in two thousand and nineteen, when we first took this up, it was like, okay, this is not one of the easy ones. Let's come back to this. And now it's reached the point to where we got to bring those harder ones back out and try to tackle them again. So I'm going to sit down right there. I hope that answered your questions.
That, that help you all?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. You got, you got what you need?
I got what I need, yes, sir. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So I'm in favor of this thing, but like what Duke brought up and Jim's concern is the, the weekend warriors that come down and the people renting their houses out. We've got to find some way to regulate or put this in so this is for long-term. And the reason I'm saying, I'll give you some, some numbers. Porridge Road where I live at, and my family's been there for over a hundred and some years, we're three-quarters of a mile long, and we have four brand-new Airbnbs on that road. Everybody's jumping on it. And so because the money is flowing and coming in there. We're not creating essential housing for our workers if we're continuously creating Airbnbs all over the place, because they're going to go for the Airbnbs instead of renting out for nine-hundred dollars or a thousand or eleven-hundred dollars a month. They're going to get the two-hundred dollars a night, and they'd be fooled not to.
Our challenge is not how do we regulate, and we know how to do that. Our challenge is how do we enforce it?
That's right.
And how do we, how do we know? How do we find out? And when we do, what do we do? And then how do you, I mean, that's a much more difficult problem is the enforcement side.
And, and I agree with that. That's, that's what the challenge is going to be. But I want to make sure that we're all understanding that what we're doing here is possibly creating, worst-case scenario.
Yeah, and we're, if we don't, if we aren't able to enforce it, then we've created a problem. Instead of creating a solution, we've created a problem because we've just increased tourism density about however many of these things get built.
Commissioner, that's why I brought up the fact of long-term.
Yeah.
And that's, and, and we can certainly put that in the language if we so choose to, to go that route.
But I'm fully behind us a hundred percent, and, and thank you for bringing it up. But Duke, what'd you tell me? That you said that you can regulate it by fire alarms or fire...
They put some restrictions in there, made a permit, made a conditional use. Now, I don't remember, it was thirty years ago when I left Long Island.
Okay.
But they had tens of thousands of illegal apartments. And they said, why don't we, we're not going to stop it. They had no place to put these people. So let's regulate it. And they made a conditional use, charged like a hundred dollars a year, which only gave them permission, anything to inspect the house if they had to. And it also, it served a couple of purposes. People who owned that house now could claim that extra income, and it qualified them for younger people to get a bigger mortgage. So, so that was a plus. It gave them a little more tax value. The house, the value of the house with the, with the legal apartment in it was worth more and assessed more, and the taxes went up, and they collected tax revenue out of it. So there was a lot of good points to it. You legalized things, you made sure there was off-street parking, they checked for smoke alarms every year. And they didn't have to. They said they're lucky they could every house, every five or six... They said, they're lucky they could every house every five or six years. They do a walkthrough. So there was a lot of things. I don't know how to enforce, I don't know how to write it like that. The only other thing I see pertains to us with the Airbnbs is Airbnb collects the occupancy tax when the people book it through the agency and the taxes. Now you have a record of where that money came from.
Right.
And you've got to do a little bit of cross-referencing, and for a little bit, there'll be a little bit of work, but at least you'll be able to find out, thinking, well, this is not, they don't have a permit, they don't have a...
They just sent us a check, right, Bobby?
We don't do, can't do what he just said, because the Airbnb doesn't give us the underlying data. They send us a big check and say, here's the thing, and we can't make them give us that data. So I don't know, when they write this big check every quarter, however often they pay us for the occupancy tax on the Airbnbs, we get a check from Airbnb, but we can't then go say that was for Urban's house or Wyllie's house or whatever. There's no way to correlate the two.
Why he gets the big bucks?
Yeah.
Can I ask, Bobby, is there such a thing as permitting Airbnbs? If we're going to go into this, if somebody wants to do an Airbnb, do we have a permit? Does that allow for some enforcement actions?
The answer is maybe. We aren't the first local government to try to address the Airbnb issue, and we'll see what some other local governments have done and do that. And I misspoke a little longer. I said tourism, I meant Airbnbs. There's nothing wrong with tourism, that's why we're here. It's the Airbnbs that, the tourism is fine, but they're taking the spots that we need to have the workers to make the tourism economy go. So that's the conflict that we have in those issues.
Yeah, I'm fine. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else?
Can I have a question?
You, go ahead, one.
Yeah, just in the discussion as it relates to Airbnbs versus permanent. Obviously, we'd like for all of them to be permanent. I have a little bit of an issue of fellow down the street from the four that you have on your street now, if he wants to add an ADU and rent it out as an Airbnb, and suddenly we're saying he can't do that, or somebody somewhere else in the county, you're saying, you're telling someone, what we're trying to do here is increase in inventory of rentable properties, some of which would be Airbnbs or VRBOs, and some of which would potentially be year-round housing. When I was thinking about this, I never considered that it wouldn't, some of them be Airbnbs, or, but I don't think all of them would be.
Regulating Airbnbs, places do that. But we want Airbnbs, because if I build my house and I want to rent it by the week, we encourage that. There's thousands of those here. That's what we are. That's our economy is those rental houses. And so whether I rent my rental house through one of the local property management companies or whether I rent it through Airbnb, it's the same thing. And so we're not really talking about how do we regulate Airbnb. We couldn't outlaw Airbnb or maybe not want to any more than we could outlaw you renting a house that you own for a week through one of the property managers, the same.
Can't enforce it anyway.
Same thing. Who's the property manager? Airbnb or the local property management company? And so what we're talking about is how do we make sure that we enforce that 30-day rental requirement, that longer-term rental requirement, so that it doesn't become a weekly rental and it does become, hopefully, housing for that workforce that we're looking for? And that is the struggle, because you can't just treat it like an Airbnb across the board. You can't go to somewhere that's done it and say, we're going to treat, here's how we're going to regulate Airbnbs, because we're going to catch things we don't want to, we encourage. Again, that's our challenge, and as we work through it, we'll try to figure that out, understanding that there's no point in doing this if we can enforce it. Or you take, what I think Commissioner Overman was saying is, don't worry about it. If it all becomes Airbnb, then fine, but some percentage of it's going to go to housing, and we'll get more than we've got now, and maybe we don't worry about it. So that's something that you all have to flesh out. Let us get deeper into it, let us get some ideas in front of you, and then we can flesh out more specifically the policy and the direction that you want to go.
Yeah, I don't see any common sense, any reason in creating something that's non-enforceable. I don't, I think that's a burden we don't want to lay on you. That don't make a lot of sense to me.
Okay. All right. We'll let you...
We'll move forward, and we'll see what comes out of the planning board, and then we'll take this discussion further once we have something to speak from.
So basically, what we want from the planning board is to come to us, we're requesting them to come to us with a set of recommendations regarding the creation of ADUs in Dare County.
So the planning board is a cross-section of the community, and we're going to ask them to make a recommendation. And their recommendation could be, yeah, we should do ADUs, and here are some ideas and rules. It could be, we don't think this is a good idea. If they do, they'll tell us that, and then we'll bring it back, and you all can decide what to do from there.
But it is for unincorporated dare.
For unincorporated dare, correct.
Absolutely. All right, that's all we have authority to do.
All right. That takes us to item nine, which is the consent agenda. And on the consent agenda, we have the approval of the minutes, we have Health and Heavens Services, Social Services, Low-Income Energy Assistance Program budget amendment, we have the More Beach to Love budget amendment, and we have the Tax Collector's Report.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a second?
All seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Tobin and Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like so?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous.
And next is the board appointments, and you have one board appointment, the Virginia Estillit Community Center Advisory Board Nominating Committee recommends that Cindy Perry serve the remaining term of Daniel Oddie through August of 2022.
Move to point, Cindy Perry serve out the unexpired term of Daniel Oddie.
Okay, motion on the floor by Commissioner Vice Chairman Overman, seconded by Commissioner Ross. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like so?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous.
Chairman, while we're speaking about the Virginia Estillit Center, I was going to do it on my agenda, but with your permission, I'll do it here.
Sure, go ahead.
We had done a resolution to name this the Virginia Estillit Center. The advisory board over at the Estillit Center came back and said, this is always intended to be a community center. Could we add community center to that board? I think I've spoken to most of you about that, but we would like to do that. For me to do that formally, you all need to add community to it, because your resolution said different than that. I need you to approve that tonight so that we can move forward with the Virginia Estillit Center.
All right. Is there a motion by Commissioner Couch, who's seconded by Commissioner House? Any further discussion?
That's what they are, is community centers.
That's correct. That's correct. Glad they caught that. Those in favor of the motion, didn't signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like so? Motion carries unanimous.
That'd be your agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, County Manager. That brings us to item 11, Commissioner's business, County Manager's business. Commissioner Tobin, do you mind kicking it off this evening?
Sure. We had the meeting with the shipbuilders today, and probably the biggest announcement was that the ship, the Miss Katie will be put overboard on or around April 1st. A definite date's not written in stone yet, but it's going to be very, very close to April 1st. So that's a big step. Other than that, everything seems to be going on schedule. They are having some issues with getting ground fault interrupt breakers. They're hopefully going to be able to get those by April, but that shouldn't stop the progress. They can use regular breakers in lieu of those until it has to be certified. That's all I've got. I'd like to just say to Donna, we're really going to miss you, and thank you for all your dedicated years. You've set the bar very high for your replacement. That's it.
Thank you, Jim. Hope you don't, I hope you're doing okay.
I'm doing fine. I, you know, just aches and pains, but I'm doing fine.
Great, great. Commissioner Ross?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jim, I agree. Hope you're doing well. And Donna, upon your agreement to return, your children will be released from hostages unharmed. They are being well-treated, but we're going to miss you, young lady. Thank you so much again. It's really been a pleasure. I know I speak for all of us. We had a very productive meeting today, or I should say informative meeting, about broadband expansion in our 10-county Albemarle region. County Manager Outen and Vice Chair Overman and I were attending this, and there are going to be several in the area. This one was held in Terrell County, and it was explained to us by a representative of Mighty River, which is a optic cable company working on behalf of the 10-county region, that there is substantial funding being made available through the American Rescue Plan and another investment bill that escapes me at the moment, another four-letter acronym from the federal government. But it doesn't appear to be a funding problem, that it will be execution and will and commitment on the behalf of the 10 counties. So, guys, I got to tell you, it looks like broadband is going to be accessible and at appropriate speeds, both up and down, and that was a very good thing. The gentle expert memory care folks that deal with both caregivers and patients in our county suffering from memory-related illnesses have invited folks to stop by their new offices. I just wanted to share this, at 111 West Carlton in Kill Devil Hills. It's good to see them move to a nice new facility, and I wanted to wish them all good luck. Gail and Angelo Sinesso, of course, are drivers behind that and friends of mine in this memory care initiative. On a lighter note, we've got springtime coming, and there's an initiative from the Outer Banks Chamber of Commerce called the Glam Girls. It is a drive to raise articles of clothing and so forth for kids going to prom. And the Outer Banks Chamber in Kill Devil Hills, February 17, 18, and 19, looking for age-appropriate shoes, dresses, neckties, possibly tuxedos, jewelry, things that the kids might really like and use for prom that they might not otherwise be able to have. So I just wanted to do a PSA there on behalf of the chamber for these kids to have a great prom this year. I look forward, County Manager, to February 22nd, when we will hopefully have a senior member of the Bright Spring Organization here to address the board with regard to the home health and hospice, level of service, quality of service, and responsiveness to community. I just wanted to, again, remind everybody they're coming, and I hope indeed they will be here. And lastly, it does appear, for those interested in our electoral process, that with the Appeals Court approving the redistricting maps, we have officially reopened candidate filing on February 24th, and it will conclude on March 4th, after it was suspended by the State Supreme Court recently. So those filing dates will continue, the primaries are going to be in May, and hopefully the process is resumed on a more normal and stable schedule. That's all I have, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ross. Commissioner House?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This past week, the Marine Fisheries Advisory Groups from the northern, central, and southern areas of the state had meetings that were via computer. You couldn't call in this time for some reason. But it was all in reference to the Southern Flounder Amendment Three that's coming up. And it was a broad range of options they had to choose from. Most of the, all three advisory groups hit on pretty much the same options. And they're fairly favorable. I mean, it could be a lot worse, and it could be a lot better. But now it goes towards, goes back to Marine Fisheries for them to kind of get everything in perspective, and then from that point on, it will go to the Marine Fisheries Commission. And then, once they go through it, then it'll be go out to public comment. So very, I was actually very surprised at some of the comments that were made by some of the board members on the different groups, and very well-conducted meetings throughout all three regions.
We're talking about the Marine Fisheries Commission.
It's the advisory groups to the Marine Fisheries Commission.
Your favorable comments had me confused from there.
Yeah. Well, we've all known that the Marine Fisheries Commission sometimes goes totally against what their advisory boards say.
Yeah, okay.
So, but with that being said, also, at our last meeting, I introduced the Dare County's commercial fishing video, and I am happy to say that as of this morning, it has had 4.3 thousand views on YouTube. And not only with that, we actually sent it to Representative Hayning. He has forwarded it to every single representative in North Carolina. So it's in their hands if they want to view it and understand what's happening on our Our day in history, John Tyler passed away in 1862. Do you know who John Tyler was? He was the 10th President of the United States of America, and served from 1841 to 1845. Taylor had a long political career, serving as governor, senator, and ambassador, and was elected to vice president in 1840 on the Whig ticket with William Harrison. John Tyler became president in 1841 when President Harrison passed away. Tyler clashed with his own party and the Congress throughout his term. The Whigs expelled him from the party after he ruled much of their platform was unconstitutional, and also believed that the president, rather than Congress, should set the policies. In his vein, he vetoed a number of bills that came from Congress, only to become the first president to have a veto overridden by Congress. And John Tyler passed away in 1862 on this day. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner House. If you haven't seen that video that Commissioner spearheaded, excellent video, Fisher. As a matter of fact, I'm making it a part of the state of the county tomorrow.
Thank you.
And we're sharing that. It's an excellent video. Well done. Hats off, Commissioner. That was just well done. Appreciate it.
We'll get some more publicity on that tomorrow.
There you go. Vice Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When Commissioner House was asking, anybody know who John Tyler was? Being an old Rocky Mount boy, I thought maybe he was half owner and belt Tyler's.
Cousin.
That was, that was the first thing that came to mind. Anyway, thanks for correcting me on that. I should have known my history a little better. Donna, just want to say goodbye again and congratulations. Thanks for everything you've done, and like the song says, thanks for the memories. That's all I have.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Commissioner Paper?
Yes, sir. I haven't talked about Recovery Court in a while, but we're going strong. We, this past, we had a meeting, I had vertigo and had to pull out right at the very, very end. Let me tell you, if you ever get vertigo, you don't want it. It's crazy. I mean, it just makes you feel like you're drunk without the benefits of it, just walking sideways. But anyway, having said that, it's not very pleasant, but Recovery Court's going really good. They have 31 participants in there.
Wow.
And we've had some graduates, we've got some great success stories. One of the ones that comes to mind is guy graduated, he's got a job, he's buying a house. It's amazing what a little edging in, a little bit of tough love and discipline can do to help a man and a woman turn their life around. So that's going really, really good. I mean, if we're riding down 345 in Juanchees, you're going to notice construction on the side of the road by Dare Challenge. We're breaking ground, we're taking stumps out of the ground, and we're really, yes, we're really excited about that. And just let me just say this, you take a guy or a woman, and they're broken, and they're at the lowest point in their life. And you get them into a facility like this, and they get up in the morning, they make their bed, they say DeMornin' devotionals, they go outside, they salute the American flag, they say the Pledge of Allegiance, they go to work. They rebuild their lives. We educate them. They stay on, and they become stewards and disciplinary people there on campus. They stay on, and they become stewards and disciplinary people there on campus until their time is up. And then they go back to their communities, and they pass on the same thing that they learned at Dare Challenge. That's what this program is about. This is a vision, and it's what's going to happen, it's what's happening now, it's changing lives on a daily basis. And I'm so very excited for those guys, because recovery, there's nothing like recovery in life. If you've been on the other side, and all of a sudden you get to live the right kind of life, it's fantastic. So I'm excited for those folks. We lost a child. Megan referred to our lost last week seventeen-year-old kid. My challenge to all the moms and dads and the grandparents and the people in here, sit down and have a conversation with the child, with your grandkid, or whoever, the neighbor, whatever, and make sure that they understand what's out there. Because, you know, this kid didn't, just a good kid. I mean, and it didn't need to happen, but it happened. It's life. But through education, we can curb some of this stuff off. I wish I'd been able to have a conversation with that kid and tell him where it got me when I was doing the wrong kind of things. He just made a bad decision, but he lost his life. So it's really sad. And just, you know, keep praying for his mom. His mom's a single mom, and now she's just a mom, and she has nothing, and she's just heartbreaking. So, Terrace Bureau, we're, we're very fortunate, Dave. We have had a great year, which means that your job, monitoring the money and so forth, and us spending it is, is much better than it has been in the past. And so hopefully it did keep coming in. So thanks for letting me share, but keep that family in your, in your prayers, please. That's all I got.
Thank you, Commissioner Bateman. Obviously, labor of love on your part. Incredible. You know, this is just another segment. How successful this board's been, because individual commissioners working on their own individual priorities. The work you've done for Dare Challenge.
We've done.
I know we, but you've been spearheading Recovery Court, all of that, Vice Chairman with Saving Lives Task Force over these last number of years. It's incredible. Thirty-one, money well spent that this board has stepped up to the plate. And I can't thank the board enough for all the work that, that they've done. I mean, the accomplishments are just incredible. So thank you for all that hard work. Commissioner Couch?
Thank you for that, Bob. I mean, I would agree, you know, just being a bunch of guys, that we've been able to put aside, you know, petty turf and clannish-type issues and resolve as one entity for all these things that are moving Dare County forward. It's very grateful to be a part of this board. It's the hardest job I've ever done, bar none, and that includes working for my father.
Fired three times in one week. But that's a story for another time.
We've got our eye on the health of Mrs. Carol Dillon, 93-year-old Carol Dillon, kind of getting some, in church yesterday, they said if her heart rate can get down below 100, they'll put in a pacemaker. She got messed up on some medicines, but, you know, the doctors are telling her family members something else. But I just, we're gonna watch it, we're gonna see what shakes out here going forward. But she, and I mean, I know these things, she is the last of a generation. She is the last of that generation that went through the Depression. It turned out on Hatter Island, that went through World War II, that went through the book Caffey of Torpedo Junction, which won a number of children based on Ring of Spies, is based on something she truly did. Talking about movies, I'm not kidding here, it could, documentary could be based on, on her, on her life, life's experiences. She's just been somebody, the creation of the National Seashore. I know of no other one individual who has successfully battled the Atlantic Ocean. Those motels, for all intents and purposes, knowing what we know now about this being the most dynamic geologic process on the planet, you know, we've seen the volcano action and stuff's gone on in Tonga with the tsunamis and everything, but this is a regular occurrence. I mean, there's more sand moved in and off the Outer Banks in a 12-hour tidal cycle than every dump truck in the United States can carry 20 times over. That's just in a tidal cycle, and with the storms, that increases. But, you know, and it just, that motel, she, it started in 1953, it's been in her family, it's essentially hers, so what is it now, 2023? So let's call it 70 years. She told me one time, just talking about her innate skills as a small business person, we're talking about a 90, I mean, kids have grown up in that. She's been responsible for hundreds, hundreds of jobs on that island, that on a $90 unit, $84 of it, almost $84, $84 went into her pocket as profit. You know, she needs to be doing an adjunct professor role at UNC Chapel Hill School of Economics. But we'll, we'll have to see what goes on with her, and she is a tough, tough, great lady of the Outer Banks, and she told her son that, look, I'm gonna be fine, I'm gonna be out of here. Don't listen to the doctors, listen to me. And you gotta appreciate that, but just, she means a lot, that island, that those seven villages down there, they have nothing in common, nothing, other than being on the same strip of sand. But it is something like this that can galvanize, that will pull, we fight like crazy, but it takes something like this to pull us, pull us all together. So we'll see what shakes out with our health.
Well, thank you for sharing that, Danny. Tough lady, tough individual, certainly that will live right there. She, she's a tough individual, and I wish her the, nothing but the best. I hope she fully recovers.
I've been on both sides of it.
I've been on.
She'll rip your heart out.
Down your throat. She'll go down your throat. I've been on both sides too, Danny. As a matter of fact, she asked the whole board to resign one year.
Yeah. Hey, and other boards have gone through it too. She's an equal opportunity basher.
That's right. But tough, tough individual, great lady, and I wish her nothing but the best, and I hope she pulls through this. And my thoughts and prayers are for the whole family. So, thank you. All right. With that being said, one more comment. Donna, it's all been said, you know how I feel. Like I said earlier, I got your cell phone number, so don't plan on changing it, hopefully. But cannot speak highly enough about your dedication and your service to the county. It's just been incredible. Thank you. County Manager, what do you have on your agenda this evening?
I've got two or three things. One is, I'd like for you all tonight, if you don't mind, appoint Andrea Valen, she's Donna's assistant over there, but appoint her as a deputy clerk. With COVID and with whatever else is going on, if Cheryl goes out of the office, we don't have a clerk, and we don't have somebody that can affix the seal, can co-sign a test to the chairman's signature, things that we need to do daily that we might not be able to do. We've talked to her about this, she's agreed to do it. She's sat in for Cheryl before, and so we need you to appoint her. If you all appoint her tonight, then we can have her, we don't have to have her sworn in up here, but we'll swear her in tomorrow, and we'll have somebody that can fill in some of those things that Cheryl does in case she's not here.
You need a motion?
I do.
Motion. Motion's been made by Commissioner House?
Second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post like sign? Motion carries unanimous?
The Chamber of Commerce is having their economics summit coming up here in the next few, I don't know if it's weeks or months. Bob, you know what the date of it is, if you remember? I don't remember.
I have it on my calendar. I can't remember the date.
They go out annually and look for sponsors. Dominion sponsored it before, Town Bank has been a sponsor, they've got multiple sponsors. They've asked us to sponsor as well. A sponsorship is about $5,000. We can do that, but I wanted to get you all's, go ahead before I agreed to be one of the sponsors for that event. It's an event we all attend, it's helpful to us, helpful to the community, so it's something I think's worth doing.
What does being a sponsor get us?
A plaque on the thing that says we're one of the sponsors that made it happen.
A hearty, hearty slap on the back.
Got you.
I think it is money well spent, too.
Yes, money well spent. Plus, we'll have, we'll have a day, the board to work with one of the main guest speaker that's coming in.
Right.
That, he's from Canada, and he will talk about 13 things that will destroy a community. And one of them being the major topic is the NIMBY, and we'll have, we'll have him at our disposal all day, one day, to pick his brain.
Do you need a motion?
Yes, we do.
Summated.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner Bateman, then seconded by Vice Chairman. Any, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post like sign? Motion carries unanimous? Thank you.
The next thing is, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service has a visitor center down Pea Island, and they're trying to move. And there's federal money out there that would make, that they can, that can be used for that kind of purpose, and it's a grant. But because they're a federal agency, they can't apply for the grant. And so they've asked us, would we be willing to apply for the grant to be able to acquire the money and then move the visitor center or build a new visitor center? And I told them we would help them however we could. We've been the pass-through for entities in the past that want to do things like this. But it appears that we may, if we do this, have to take on the responsibility of actually building the facility, contracting for it, and then turning it over to him, and it would add another project to our load of projects that we're doing.
No water up there.
Yeah. And so, I asked them to check with the state and see if the state could be the partner. We would help them write letters of recommendation, do whatever. I don't know where those discussions went, but I told them that I would come to you all and ask you your thoughts on that. Do we move forward and try to help them with the grant? Or do we tell them, well, if we can't tackle another construction project, we will help you, but we can't go to that level?
What would they do if we were not overseeing the construction project? But let's say the federal government said, we'll give you the money.
If we, if they can't, if we don't apply for the grant, they're gonna have to have some other entity besides them apply for it.
No, my, my point is, let's say somebody just gave them a check.
If they just had the preparation, they'd just go build it themselves.
So why don't they go build it themselves, and we?
Because they don't have any money except for this grant money.
No, I know that, yeah. But if we get the money, why do we have to be the ones to oversee it?
Because the way, the way the grant language is written, is my understanding, it says that we have to, they can't build it, whoever has to build it, and then can enter a management agreement with them.
What if we hired them to build it? I'm trying to figure out a way to dance through this.
The answer is, I don't know the answer to that. I think.
They don't have the resources.
What I was thinking is.
But that's my original question. If we weren't here and they got the money, would they say, well, we got it, but we can't build it?
If we weren't here, then they would go to another entity to get the grant.
I'm not getting my question through. What if they had no federal obstruction or rule against, what if the federal government said, oh yeah, here is your grant to move that?
Then they would go build it.
How could they do that if they need us to oversee it and build it?
No, no. The issue's not they need our expertise to oversee it. The issue is they're not eligible for a grant from the federal government. So someone other than a federal agency has to apply for that grant and get it, and build it for them, and then give it to them.
Okay.
It's a, hey.
It's a government thing, Rob.
Yeah. It must be our. That's why I've repeatedly told this board, I love government regulations. I love the bureaucracy. It makes my daily life that much better.
Where is this, where do they want a new one built?
We can find a way.
It'll be right near where the one is now, but I, I don't know the landmarks, Danny, you help me.
Gee, many Christmases.
That's one of the, we've been talking about this with the task force.
That's right.
I mean, if you can, you can throw left-handed and hit the ocean.
That's right.
From the ports of that place. It's right there where the, it's the Pea Island Observatory area there.
I know where it is, I can see it, but I can't tell you.
Five miles south of Bassinide Bridge.
Is it right there?
It's in the canal zone.
Right there before you get to the Etheridge Bridge?
Yes, it's the Etheridge.
Yeah.
Well, it's where the state, Pea Island Station was. It's a mile, a mile and two tenths north of the Etheridge Bridge.
It's right next to the sand dune.
Yeah. Can we take this? Do we, do we need an answer?
Yeah, he, he needs an answer to get back to Fish and Wildlife.
I think what he told me on Friday was that the deadline had already passed, but they wanted to make an effort to maybe they could get it extended, and I said, well, best I can do is go to the board tonight.
Dustin, Dustin doesn't have enough on his plate. He's got another project.
Wait, Jim was saying something?
Jim, Jim has something.
Yeah, how big, how big a project are we talking about?
It's a visitor center, and I forgot the number, to be honest with you, Jim. I think it's.
Half a million?
Yeah, 750, something like that.
Because they just raised it up. They just put new filings up on it, even.
Well, it'd be a glorified pass-through, is what we would be. Is that, is that what I'm understanding?
No, we'd be more than glorified.
Yeah, it's the, it's the building and supervising construction, that's the problem. We don't have capacity for that.
We'd be taking grant money and building them a visitor center, pretty, to their spec.
I don't, I don't have a problem with us doing that. And me, good neighbor, you know, it's obviously adding more pressure on our staff, but there's other things going on, and Commissioner Couch certainly knows what I'm referring to, that we may need them with respects to 12 and some issues down the road. So I would, I'd prefer to be a good neighbor or try to help them any way I can.
I, I agree with you, Bob.
All right, then we'll get, Dustin says he can handle it, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, we got three.
I see Dustin sitting silent in the background, looking for the nod of the head. Yes, sir. There's a nod.
Jim, you want to make that motion, or you want me to make it?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make that motion.
Thank you. And is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Floor is open for further discussion. Hearing none, then those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post like sign? Then the motion carries unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen.
All right. The last thing I have, we've got, as you all know, some significant employment issues in terms of keeping and retaining our staff. We've had the issue come to light the hardest in our public works sector, and specifically with our equipment operators in recycling, sanitation, C and D, and rubble sites, keeping and retaining people there. We had, Elizabeth did a little in-house salary comparison, and when we looked at those positions, we found that we were $8,000 to $10,000 lower than some of our competitive towns. And so that every time an opening came, we were losing those people to those towns. And so we weren't able to retain our staff, and as you all have surely read and heard, getting CDL drivers for anybody in the country is very, very difficult right now. And so with that low wage, and with the shortage of CDL drivers, we're having a very difficult time filling those positions. And as we.
Do you know what the average is about, Bobby, approximately? I'm not trying to.
Sixty? Yeah.
Sixty?
So we start our, we start our equipment operators at about $32,000. Kill Devil Hill starts theirs at about $40,900, and Nagseth starts theirs at $38,843.
Okay.
So we're $8,000 to $10,000 lower in each one of those positions at our starting salaries. So we have those issues and that, and I'm gonna come back and talk about that in a minute. But that spurred, let's look at where else do we have issues? And when you look at our detention center, we have similar issues, not with people going to other detention centers, but with losing and not being able to bring in employees because of salary issues. And we have the same problem in the Sheriff's Department. A deputy sheriff can come in and work for us, we seem to keep the positions filled, but the moment that another position in another town comes open, they leave and go to that town. So we're basically spending the money, the effort to train them, and then as soon as something comes somewhere else, they leave because the money's not right. So from that, we, looking at some of those problem, you know, departments, I had Elizabeth just go through and look at some of the other salaries that might compare with a couple of our towns. And what we found when we did that was that in our problem areas, we averaged anywhere from eight to fifteen thousand dollars lower than some of our towns. We found that in comparable jobs among those two towns, our starting, our starting salaries were roughly two or three thousand dollar, uh, I'm sorry, were six thousand dollars or so, almost seven thousand dollars lower than Kill Devil Hills and our average starting salaries that were across the board were nearly eight thousand dollars than what's being offered in Nagseth. And so what we found in a limited study that we're capable of doing is that our salary structure isn't comparable to our competitors. And if we're going to be competitive and get employees, we've got to figure out, what are we going to do to make Dare County a place that people want to come to work and is attractive to workers versus I'll go there and stay until I can find something better? And so how do, how do we, how do we do that? How, how do we get there? Couple of recommendations that we have. One is our most pressing problem is our problem in public works and we would like to address that right now, not wait till budget time. It would cost us roughly two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars across two or three departments to do that. Not all of that comes out of the general fund. Some of that would have to come out of the sanitation fund.
And that's annually, Bobby?
Uh, yeah, annually, to try to bring those salaries on par, to at least retain what we have and at least give us an opportunity in the market when people are looking to change, that we're in the market to where we can hire those people. That's one thing that, that we would like to do. I think that we need to do a more formal salary study. We need to go back across the board and look at our departments and see where we stack up again. We're out of whack. We know we're out of whack. We just looked at what Elizabeth and I can do in-house shows us that we're out of whack. And, and I think a, a more formal one would pin that down better and we need permission, if you allow us, to send out that RFQ tomorrow to do that, to get that going quickly. So that hopefully by budget time, we can have that in place and start looking at how are we going to solve this problem? Is it going, can we do it in one budget cycle? Is it going to take more than one budget cycle? How do we do it? Where do we do it? And then we have a problem with our lower paid employees. We've got employees that don't even make fifteen dollars an hour. We've got employees that you can go to work at Dollar General or one of the fast food places and make more money than people that we haven't. In-home aide, for example, and we have trouble filling those positions. And if you wanted to bring everybody up to fifteen dollars an hour, so that the minimum salary would be like thirty-one thousand dollars, then you've now created compression from the bottom because you've pushed everybody up. And that's what that salary study is going to have to tell us. How do we address it? What's the cost? What are our, our options and those kind of things? And so we did this four or five years ago. I, I, I think it's something that we're going to find. Dave showed me a thing. I forgot the community that did it.
Yeah.
Green, Pitt County. They do about a third of their departments every year. So they, every three years, they've done the whole county. So they keep up, uh, but they don't try to, you know, bite off the whole chew in one fiscal year, which is a, a good idea. Once we get it right, then we've got to continually monitor it and do it. We knew when we did it, the market was going to outpace us at some point and it's moved quicker than we have moved. Our, our COAs haven't moved our market as quickly as the market has moved and that's what we're finding. And so we've got to do something to do that. We're losing people now to, uh, flexible schedules. We had talked about flexible schedules, um, at a couple of our workshops. We kind of weren't so sure we really wanted to go down that road back then. That's been a couple of years ago. Now we don't have a choice. We, we've lost the IT guy. He's going to have a flexible schedule. You know, we've got people that have opportunities for flexible schedule. If we don't compete in all of these areas, we're going to lose those people. Anybody that sits in front of a computer screen all day and that's their job can do that anywhere there's a computer screen and when they get those opportunities, they're going to take them. And so we've got to come up with a way, one, to retain those people and two, maybe to attract those people because there's people maybe somewhere else in Mo Yoc that might, would come to work for Dare County if they could do it remotely some of the time or all the time or whatever the flex schedule was, if that's a direction that you all would allow us to go. So I guess there's two or three things. One, I'd like permission to move forward and Dave and Elizabeth and I'll figure out across the departments how to come up with that two hundred and eighty-five thousand to solve public works right now because if we get to the summer and we're still bleeding employees, we're in trouble. The second thing is I want permission to do the salary study to, you know, address some of those things. And three, I'd like permission to bring back to you a proposed flexible schedule plan for those departments that can do that, um, to look at, again, trying to make it a way where we can keep and attract people. And then in my staff meeting, I'm going to go to the staff and have them talk with their employees and say, you know, what else can Dare County do to make this a place where people want to be and want to work? What do we do? How do we do it better? How do we attract people? And see what they say. We may have other ideas and we'll come back to you with those too, but those are the things, the three things that I need to know about tonight because those are things we need to move forward with fairly quickly if we're going to implement those.
Any questions, Bobby?
No, Chairman. Go ahead, go ahead. Steve.
I'd, I'd like to, uh, go ahead and make the motion that County Manager follow up on all options he's just presented to us.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House to, uh, to approve those three, um, items that County Manager presented, presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Second about a vice chair. Now the floor is open for further discussion. Danny?
Uh, just an observation is, uh, you know, we're, we're seeing this down on Hatteras in the private work sector. You know, I, you can walk into any of the real estate, the big property management companies down there and there are not half the amount of people walking in and out of there. You can actually hear yourself think. You can hear your steps bouncing, echoing off the wall. But that's not a bad thing because, you know, we're trying to deal with childcare and it's easier for somebody who can't get child, taking Dare County as an example, you know, they can sit at home with their kids, uh, they've, they've, with their children, have, uh, managed to, uh, do their job and save on childcare. It's like getting a raise. So the, the flexible thing is, is appealing and I, I'm, I'm on board. I think Bobby, you did a good job presenting it in the light that you did.
Anyone else have any?
No, I agree with you. Thank you, Bobby, for, for focusing on these. So, yeah, I'm with you.
We, uh.
We can't allow ourselves.
We knew, excuse me.
I was, I was just going to say, Ms. Chairman, that we cannot allow Dare County to have trash in the streets and that's where we're headed if we don't do something.
Hey, we're not New York City.
That's exactly right.
We'll be like that train in San Francisco.
Folks are.
That's right. And quite honestly.
LA, excuse me.
When we did this salary study four or five years ago and we, we made that approval, we knew that, that this was, we were going to have to address this, uh, every so often and it's, 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 um, it's too critical to see us losing staff, um, uh, by some ten thousand dollars, uh, to a municipality. I mean, that's, that's, that's critical. We, we need that. And, um, as the County Manager said, we lost a key employee in IT because the private sector is allowing them to work from home. And, and you know what? That's, that's the new, new world we live in and we've got to, we've got to work, uh, work within those limits in the future.
And with that IT guy, that, that wasn't the only reason, but.
Well, I know, but that was one of the major reasons.
And I lost a nurse and a police officer today as well.
Pardon?
I lost a nurse and a police officer today as well.
Wow, yeah. I mean, it's.
Both for money.
Pardon?
They're staying locally. One's going to another town and one's going to Biden.
Wow. So, well, thank you guys for, um, for agreeing to that. So the motion's been on, is on the floor and seconded. Those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
And then the last thing is the Highway Twelve Subcommittee.
Let me stop a minute. When I called on the County Manager for his report, he said, I got a couple of items.
Yeah.
This is.
He's a math prodigy. This number fifteen.
The litany goes on.
Now, Danny, I can get a UNC jab now because a couple of items that in my book is two, not five.
That's the way we counted.
So, so that's how you count at UNC?
At East Carolina, we teach them better.
At least in Carolina, we can count.
Hey, Bob, this is called the Bobby Outland Show.
He must have stopped on the way in Nash County for his math lesson.
He meant a couple hours.
The Highway Twelve Subcommittee had a meet, the, what will be the next to last meeting and set the priorities at, that, uh, meeting for the various hotspots on Highway Twelve. The consensus of the group and it was pretty much unanimous after much discussion was the Canal Zone, Ocracoke, Frisco, Buxton and Avon is the order. Anybody asks us the order that we would prefer to do that. Dave Halick and I will write up a report. There'll be one more meeting of the Subcommittee to review the report and.
Before you send it to the full task.
And then we'll bring it to the full task force.
Okay.
To do with what they will. So just to let you know that that's starting to conclude and it's been a fairly productive six months working on that. That's all I have now for my couple of things.
So, so you sure that's all, yeah?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, County Manager. You had to get that jab in. Public Information Officer, Ms. Hester, you don't have anything to report?
No, sir.
Not even anything coming up?
Not tonight.
Not even anything coming up tomorrow?
Oh.
Yes, please.
Nudge, nudge.
So we'll be going live with the Chairman's State of the County presentation at two o'clock tomorrow from this room. Just the board members and a few staff members will be here. So in case anybody's wondering if they could, Mary Helen asked me about attending, but it's every, it's press and everyone will be attending virtually.
So when they go on site, help us understand how John Doe out there can link.
Sure. We'll have a slide on the home screen. If you go to darenc.com, we'll have a, the picture that comes up where you can click and it'll take you to the YouTube, YouTube link. There's also a link to our YouTube on the right-hand side of the homepage.
So they don't have to do anything but click on that?
That's correct. And we've scheduled some social media, because when you click on our YouTube page, um, it will come up, once it goes live, it'll come up at the top.
Oh, okay.
So it's, it's fairly easy to find.
Okay.
And, um, we'll be putting out some social media posts with links for people to go directly as well. So we have some things planned like that. We'll be sending out an e-notification about an hour before as a reminder to people.
Super.
So we do have some reminders going out. And I believe Commissioner Overman is, I'm going to grab this because I don't have it. I was, I didn't say anything. I, I too want to thank Donna. I have really enjoyed working with her these many years. I'm going to miss her as well, just the knowledge that she has when I need to know about something to be able to call her. And, um, I wish you well, Donna. She's helped me during hurricanes as well. That wasn't on the list of bullets, but she has helped me out there when we're in a pinch and activated at the EOC. There is a retirement, a floating open house since we're not able to do things, bring large crowds together. Folks have been invited to stop by on Thursday, January twenty-seventh or Friday, January twenty-eighth between nine and three PM each day. And that's in the Manio Planning Office here at the Administration Building. So I hope everybody can stop by and wish her well. Nothing planned formally during those times, but everyone's invited to come by and wish her well.
Thank you, Dorothy.
Yes, sir.
I just had to.
Hey, Dorothy?
Go ahead, Jim.
Hey, Dorothy, I'd like to, uh, congratulate your Georgia Bulldogs.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
That's very, that's very difficult for me to say.
I know. You told me you're an Alabama fan. Yeah, I'm glad they pulled it off. It's been, I was actually in high school the last time they won the national championship, so it's been a long time.
Yeah. How's it going with the website revamp?
The redesign?
Yeah.
We're gradually meeting with departments and, um, just doing all the legwork, you know?
A lot of work.
It is.
I'm looking for the finished product.
But they're doing a lot of, um, looking at maps to see how people are getting, we've, they, they're doing, this time around, the redesign is much more thorough than it has been in the past. We're seeing things. Caitlin's even been making some changes on the current site to address some of the things we're seeing, like with people trying to set up a new account with the Water Department. I mean, we immediately saw that that's one of the major issues people are having with, with our site. So we're, we're digging deep and finding things that need to be brought forward easier to find.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Dorothy. I just want to thank Dorothy and her staff. We've been working on this State of the County for a couple of months now and they've been floating stuff back and forth to me and I've been tweaking and I've been adding and I've been subtracting and, and I just, it, a lot goes into the presentation, the, 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 the slides, the videos that Steve has done, uh, from the fishing industry, the, the video that we're going to share with all the statistics of the county. You'll, you'll be, you'll be astounded at the statistics of our staff and our different departments as to how much is going on just in the last year. And, and it takes a lot to put this all together. I couldn't thank Matt enough, IT, for, he's been working with us. You'll see the cameras in the back there, the screens, the monitors, everything, just coordinating all this and putting it all together is really, uh, takes some time and we've been working on it for over two months. And I just can't thank Dorothy enough for her staff and all that tweaking and adding and subtracting and, and making sure we, making sure we don't overlook anything, which I'm sure we probably have. But Bobby's had some input with it with me as well. So, um, once again, I, I, I hope this will turn out to be a really, really good virtual presentation. I'd rather do it personally in front of a group because it makes it more personal and we can bring, uh, community leaders in and, and, but under the circumstances with COVID, we've, we've got to do this virtually again. But thanks again, Dorothy, for your staff and Matt, uh, all, all of y'all's work. With that being said, uh, Finance Director, Mr. Clausen, do you have anything else for us this evening?
No, sir. I thought about it, but, um, all I'll say is the, the, the final rule for the rescue, American Rescue Plan money came out over a little bit of a week ago and the rule's two hundred and forty-some pages long and the summary's forty-four pages. So it's going to be a few weeks before.
Wow.
We get back to you.
Wow.
It's hot in here.
But there's good news, is there not?
Well, I think so, um.
Prompting you there, Dave?
For, yeah. For months, I've been telling department heads and stuff, if you've had, under the first rules, if you had a revenue loss, you could turn around and quote, use the money for just the money for just about anything you wanted to. We didn't have a revenue loss. The new rule is that you basically get a $10 million pass. So if you got awarded less than $10 million, you're assumed to have that much of a revenue loss. And that's going to save all the small towns in North Carolina. They're not going to have to go through all this stuff. But we still got to find out the accounting for that and the reporting and what happens in what funds and do you move expenses, do you not? But I think at the end of the day, what our recommendation will be is to take advantage of that and quote, use it for eligible expenses, so that in the end, you end up with the same amount of money, but.
And for us, that's a 7.2?
Yes, sir. $7,180,000 plus interest, whatever a little bit that is. But then you're free to use that same amount under just normal government restrictions.
So if we were going to use that money, which we were for affordable housing.
Yes.
Then if we take the approach that Dave just said, we don't have to go through all that regular rule under affordable housing to show how affordable housing impacted.
Exactly.
Or COVID impacted affordable housing, all that detail, that hopefully gets eliminated under these rules because we're going to use it for, under the $10 million exemption, put it in the general fund, and we just take it back out without those rules.
That's why I was indicating, it seemed to be good news for us as a county in order to be able to employ those funds with a lot less challenge, difficulty, or hurdles to cross. So, thank you.
Right. That's right.
Thank you, Dave. One more, couple more comments. Duke, thank you again for being here. Thank you for working with Dean Sweeney. This is our technical group and what we need in the county with all the trades and those folks coming out of high school, being able to take advantage of the Dare Guarantee is, is just, doesn't get any better than that. So thank you for your, all your work with that, and I really appreciate it. And Dustin, we figured you didn't have enough on your plate, so you got one more project to handle. But he does a great job for us.
Absolutely.
He has a great relationship with these builders and these architects. And I, Dustin, can't thank you enough for what you're doing from that standpoint. It, it really makes a difference. And so we're fortunate to have that talent on staff to help us do that.
Thank you.
With that being said.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to adjourn the meeting. If we dedicate this meeting to the outstanding and committed work of Donna Creef.
Amen.
And adjourn until 9:00 AM on February 12.
Amen. There's a motion on the floor.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Jim Tobin.
I knew Jim would second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Pose likes that? Motion carries unanimously.